He walked off, I mean no lift, he just walked off. The guy tore his ACL and his MCL and he just walks off, no pay. Hey, I'm good. His next day, well, I think it just might be a sprain, I'm good. Day to day, blue and neat. I think they're gonna try and rip Lofton off the rest of the year. Lofton played for Baker last year.
Lord closed the door of hate and opened the door of love and unity all over the world. Let kindness come with every gift and good desires with every creating. We ask for your special care and blessing for our men and women in the armed forces who are defending us. Let the elements of war disappear and be replaced with world peace. Amen.
Clerk Calloway.
Mayor Stafford.
Here.
Alderman Lincoln.
Here.
Alderman Sahaski.
Here.
Alderman Weston.
Here.
Alderman Cavallaro.
Here.
Alderman Thompson.
Here.
Council President and Sixth Ward Alderman Ron Woodward.
Here.
And City Attorney David Hawthorne.
Here.
Not present.
Thank you. Are there any amendments to any of the agenda items? First item.
Resolvent minutes of the council meeting held on June, July 1st, 2003 are hereby approved as per task.
Motion.
I'll move that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Whereas a city clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for an informational hearing to be held at this council meeting of July 15th to consider changing the areas of Keuga, Utica, Buffalo, and South Third Streets from one-way streets to two-way streets. Mayor Stafford will now declare this informational hearing open.
Chief Spahn, would you come forward, please?
Good evening.
Good evening.
By way of background, the police department was asked to study, to conduct a traffic study a few years ago on the possibility of converting Keuga Street, one block area, from one-way traffic to two-way. Thing proposition, either they all need to remain one-way or they should all be two-way streets just for the sake of confusion. The history on this is a little tough to follow. We were able to track back to about the 1950s, at least, when these streets were one-way. And it is believed that that was done for the sake of church traffic in those areas. Anyways, that's, in a nutshell, we are, we have proposed, we've put together a plan to convert the one-way streets to two-way streets. And I do have Sergeant Simpson is here tonight from the Traffic Division. She has a long list of different parts of the vehicle and traffic ordinance that would need to be amended, including the deletions for some of the one-way streets, deletions of some of the one-sided parking, and addition of certain parking regulations for other areas. This would also move the DMV test site from the south side of the park to the north side of the park, using what's currently an underused block of Buffalo Street. That's it in a nutshell. If you have questions, or if you have specific questions on signs, I have Sergeant Simpson here.
So all of the, whether or no, one-way streets up in that area would go to two-way streets?
Right, that's the proposal. If there's to be any change made, again, we need, it really needs to be an all or nothing. It either needs to stay the same, or everything needs to get changed for the sake of consistency. This will also help on methods of turning from two-way streets to other two-way streets.
Mur?
I'm reading the traffic study, and what I'm looking at, leaving South Third Street one-way should take, take care of any suggestion?
That was a previous strip?
... later on in the traffic study, to move the test site over and have it included in the other traffic study. Right, that would be changed.
South Third Street, each way as well. I guess, since it's my work, Harley, I have two questions. What do you think? We were maybe talking about this a couple of weeks ago, when we were asking about the paint and arrows on the road, and I told you, oh, not so much.
Right. But I do have something to say, because when they changed those from two-way to one-way, I lived on that street, I've been living there for 60 years. And they changed it, and I went, came to the meeting and asked why they were changing it. They said the state was mandating because it was dangerous with cars taking too many left-hand turns getting off of the arterial, which we have now at 481. Well, there weren't that many cars then, and there's triple the cars now, so if it was dangerous then, why would it be more dangerous today? Because there's that many more cars making a left turn. For myself, I don't care whether my street is, I mean, there's advantages and disadvantages, but for the safety coming off the arterial, when you're making left-hand turns on every one of those streets, Keuga, Rochester, Utica, and Buffalo, and all them, those are cars stopping, and the flow of speed is too fast down there, because there's supposed to be 30 mile speed limit. But I live there, and there's no 30 mile speed limit going through there. And when people want to make a left turn, they stop and wait. Well, this can cause rear-end accidents, which happen quite frequently. And when you leave the one-way, at least they've got to move a couple streets. I live on Buffalo, and when it becomes a two-way again, I won't come up my street, because it's too close to the light. I'll go all the way up to Highland, like I do now, because it's an easier street, it seems it gives more time for the traffic to come from the light, that when you, when you get a light, the opposite of where you're, the others are going, traffic catches up to you. So if you're right away making a left turn, they're right on your tail. So myself, I think it's more dangerous to keep putting it back to one-way street. I mean, a two-way street.
You've told me before that even though your street is one-way going down the hill towards 481, there's still cars that go up the hill.
That's right.
Just like we heard from the Chamber of Commerce, which is one-way down the hill, and there's still cars that go up.
Yeah.
So both of the
I witnessed that the other day in the meeting.
Westbound streets do experience already eastbound traffic.
... fusion, but this is like the old pocket of the city that we still have, and made, you know, major to one-way streets. But to address your concerns on the left turns, granted, left-hand turns do create some safety issues, but right now, left turns in heaven, even with the one-way configuration it is right now, left-hand turns can be made on Buffalo Street legally now, left-hand turns can be made on Keuga Street right now, and Rochester Street. Now Rochester signalized, you know, traffic, the traffic.
Well, she's talking about left-hand off of 481 onto the side streets, where they're backed up, they'll be backed up every block going north on 481 for people who are trying to turn left, which would be east, onto every side street. That's what you're talking about.
481.
It's still impossible, I mean, the, it's nothing to do with the traffic, right, not being able to take left. It's the idea that there's a business, a special law can be built down there, which I all wanted to come down before that was built, not allow that, because it was a wrong place to put it, where you have to build off, it's not a small place to put it. But I'm on that case, so let it go. But I don't wait for left-hand turns, unless it's early morning, Sunday, late at night, I go right, even if I've got to go around the block to go where I want to go, and I go, because it's too dangerous, so I don't take a chance. But I'm worried about the highway, the people coming from north, going south. Now, right now, they only have a couple that they can go along to speed. When you open them all, they're going to be able, so there's going to be cars stopping at any one of those. And a woman was just telling me yesterday, she says, I tried to go to H and I, H and I block, see that section down the north, where the super big winter city. She says, I couldn't get off that street, I was parked there like a car, the highway, and that would be happening in every one of the streets, if it's a two-way.
Well, and again, right now, you're actually kind of referring to, you would increase left-hand turns for Keuga? No, sorry.
Buffalo and Utica.
Buffalo and Utica Street, two extra streets. Because currently those same left-hand turns can be made from Utica and Rochester.
From the, from the
In Keuga?
Yeah, they will one-way out. Well, that's, one is one-way, and it hasn't changed as far as helping certain things, like when winter comes, and then, you know, open with winter. I've lived on that street, and it's been a one-way street for the last 20 years, you say, and the plows will never change their ways and go down once and get that the street. We have snow this high, this ever constable view, the neighbor across the street has his own, because the plow never goes out that side. They come up my one-way streets, drops it off on the arterial, and I drive there. This has been going on for 20 years. So I hope if they do make it a two-way, they're going to change the pattern and get somebody else a break with the snow.
Actually, that's an interesting point that you bring up about the maintenance, because there are certain times on these one-way streets in the winter that the city trucks have to go the opposite direction. And I think this will also
Sometimes, it's never been anything but.
And it will also facilitate the trash, I think, trash removal.
Well, the trash removal, they don't, they stay pretty much, once in a great, great while, they'll, they'll come down on, you know, the one-way.
But this gives them the latitude to use either side of the street.
A bane, it killed my husband, it's going to kill me.
Next term. Is there anyone else that cares?
I saw, Dr. Talis just came in too, and we talked about this a couple of years ago, before this was even proposed. And he had said that he was against changing the two-way traffic, or the one-way to two-way back then, weren't you? Or do you have anything to say about it, or?
Well, I think I did it late, so I don't know what's been said so far.
Please come forward, if you.
As some of you know, I'm a business owner in that area, on the corner of Third and Utica Street. My concern primarily is parking. My secondary concern, but, but an equal concern, I think, is safety. Regarding parking, the corridor between the two churches on any given Sunday, or any given funeral event, or, all you got to do is go down there and see that there's, parking is necessary on both sides of that street during church services and any events that the churches have there. I, I don't know why the streets are, have been one-way over the years, but it's obvious to me that it's, probably at one time was because of the parking for the churches, and that, that hasn't changed. Churches still need parking there, and there's still, in the wintertime, that's going to be a huge problem. I don't know where you're going to put people, if you park on both sides of the street in the winter, there's only room for one car to get through there. Two-way traffic would be impossible. So those cars have to go somewhere to park. I don't generate a lot of parking volume in my practice, but on, on days where there's church events, other than Sunday, parking is a problem. I lived in that area for 15 years, and, and the one-way streets were never a problem for me. I don't know, I don't know the reasons behind changing it, but it's made it a very, a safer place to live for my kids, because there's not as much traffic that comes through there. That's one of the reasons I think some people like to live in that area. They don't have to worry about traffic in both directions. It's a little bit more predictable. So that's, those are my comments.
Thanks, Brad.
Thank you, Doc.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Can I ask a third one, too? Go ahead.
Excuse my voice, I have to stop, throw, I'd like to
Excuse me, could you come up to the microphone so we can all hear what you're talking about and what's going on?
Well, first of all, I apologize, we only have two prints, I didn't have time to make out some more for everybody. All due respect to the doctor, his liability of not having enough parking shouldn't affect everybody on the street.
Okay, could you tell us who you are?
Yes, Brian Seymour, Easy Paving.
I know where you were, Brian, nobody else did.
Okay. And for quite a while, we've been looking for some change. I realize, over the years, we keep talking about the churches with their parking, we have one church that's for sale, we have other churches that memberships are down, I'm a member of that church. We know what the parking situation is. There's only two out of 360 business days, so any odd events will occur, besides Sunday. So we feel that there should be some changes. And we're looking to spend, off these blue prints, give like $20,000 for beautification improvements on each side of the street, and we're not going to do it.
So you're, to one, you're worried about one?
What I'm worried about is getting into traffic off 41, going up the hill, aggressively there. The city has minimal cost
Yeah.
Did you, were you there when the chief said that he would like the council to consider all or none? Because we're talking about more streets than just, we're talking about
I know, Brian, I'm speaking on our street.
Okay. But I mean, if this proposal, I think we need to listen to what our experts have told us, and we either do it one way or not, because of the consequences of mix and match.
So you are, you are in favor of two-way traffic, changing it to two-way traffic?
That's what he said.
Okay, I just
For the public, he's proposing to do some improvements for his, for his business properties on both sides of Utica Street, but he's not willing to do that unless he has two-way traffic, because you're downward by the chamber, right?
Exactly.
The Chamber of Commerce?
Also, we took down a vacant building
I know, right across the room. That's good.
But you, you feel you need two-way traffic for this investment?
Absolutely.
Any other questions, Mr. Seymour?
Another one.
There you go.
Maybe I read it in the wrong room here, but it also said prohibited parking in the south side of the street, not alre, not already designated, designated for no parking? Is that still?
In
And what streets would we be talking about?
Yeah.
This is dated 8/29/01, maybe I've got an old version here. And the street's in question? Are we going to lose parking in it?
Actually, I wanted Sergeant Simpson to explain, just so there's no misunderstandings on, on the loss of part, and there is a couple spaces lost in one location, some more gained in another.
Right, but are we going to eliminate one side of the street, or anything like that?
Not necessarily, she has a map. She can speak to the
Okay.
Not also like that, we're going to add 16 parking spots that's going to be available across the street, parking, we're spending our money, we're not limiting them, we're not limiting it, so add our building.
Very good, thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
I forgot to mention that if you do go into the two-way streets, I hope the city will find enough money to fit a curving. We have no curving at all, and if you're going to have to park up the hill, if you want to back, you know, your cars to curving, so they don't roll up, they don't roll anyway, because we have no curving at all on our population.
Okay.
It's been gone for a long time, so that would be a thing, if you want to make it a two-way street, you get curving up there, so they'll be able to hold their cars rolling back down the hill. And what is this distance that they want to say no parking, going to no standing, does that mean they're going to drop that sign that's on our street down further?
He's coming up.
You got to repeat that again. We have a sign now on Buffalo Street, that you can park from, right, well, just about two cars' length from where I am, down to the arterial. Now, if you drop that sign down further We're not dropping it down. Good. Where it is, is where it's going to stay. Because you have to be so many feet from that intersection, that will remain there. Because they did that over on, on, um, the next street, Cadney Street, where the hairdresser is, and they dropped that down, and that's very dangerous this winter, right? All those head-on pushers coming in that street, because the hairdressers, there's a car parked, and it isn't a hundred feet, they don't think it's maybe 10 feet, I don't know if it is 10 feet, and there's a car parked right down there, close, and when you're coming off the arterial, there's somebody coming out the vision center, somebody coming down Cadney Street, I'm coming off the highway, and there's no place, so somebody's got to get, and no one coming off the arterial can get, can't that up? Well, unfortunately, we can't have all of our streets wide enough for three cars. All over the city, there's certain spots where it's only so many feet wide, whether it's up in the South Third Street, Utica, Rochester Street area, or even on the west side. Streets are different sizes, all over the place. I know, some are so narrow. Based on how the streets are already set up, and the parking, and the fact that there is already traffic flowing, there are, there are areas that will have parking, but there are other spots that were picking up parking spaces. So if you have a chance to sit down, and you want to look at what we have proposed, and you think that there is something that may or may not work well, we'll look into it a little bit farther, and maybe there are some changes that we could propose in the future. This is in Rock Solid. That one spot is very dangerous, I wish that you had the police department But that's not the issue right now. No, it's still going to be, when they change the streets and make more parking, I realize they need the parking, but when you have a couple accidents, it's too late. And, and I've come so close, so many times, because I live on a one-way street, I've got to go that way. It isn't that I choose, do I have to? And I'm worried about the church. Presently on Rochester Street, we have parking on both sides. On second and third, there is parking on the, on the, between second and third, there is parking on the north side, but it's restricted on the south side of the street. It will remain the same. Restricted means there are no, there's no rock? Correct. Okay, thank you, sir. If they go two-way, are there going to be stop signs going the other way? Yes. I live on South Third, and I can tell you that we have no problem, we yell at cars passing because they're flying through, not stopping. There's a lot of young kids right there. They come up Keuga, so, I'm, I'm on South Third, between Keuga and Utica. They come flying up Keuga, without a concern, and they come, I mean, they go the wrong way all the time, it doesn't matter what day. On church day, you know, on Sundays, trying to get out of, in the wintertime, trying to get out of the driveway is a big struggle. And my driver and my neighbors are joined, so we can cut across each other, it's still a big deal to get out. That's one of my concerns in the winter, for that, but there, you can't get two cars going through if it's on that section, when it's wintertime, you know, come January, February, there's not, there's a winter league. We have so much snow. Oh, I know. That's not the only rule. But in the summertime, there's cars flying through there, and there's nobody there to stop them, and it doesn't matter if it's stop signs or not, but there's a lot of young kids there, and There are going to be stop signs, there's a proposal that we add stop signs for both directions of travel, on Utica Street, at the intersection of South Fourth, on South Third Street, at the intersection of Buffalo Street, Rochester Street, Utica Street, and Keuga Street. So there'll be stop signs? Yep. So there'll be no more races on Rochester Street? We would hope not, thank you. Can't make any changes.
Sheila, did you say South Third is going to be the one that's now?
Um, yes, there will be a stop sign at South Third and Utica Street, for both directions of the street.
Jill, is that correct, that statement I read, or has that changed? Prohibited, prohibited parking on the south side of the street, not already designated for no parking?
I don't know where you were. Study this. Sergeant Ramon Check did grant me an office, and I moved the office in September of 2001. It's been kind of doing prior to that. When will they decide on to do what they want to do? When will the decision come out? Is it up to these people, or?
Yes.
So you're going to have more public hearings on it, or you're just going to make up your mind tonight?
This is just an informational hearing tonight, this is not a public hearing.
Discussing things, getting together, and, when was your constituents, et cetera?
Well, we have studied it before. I think the last study was done, I asked for, it was from a constituent of mine in that area, and when they did the study, they included all of them, because they don't want to mix and match in there. So this is probably the third or fourth time in the last four, five years it's been done.
Because it's traffic-related, the city code authorizes it to be changed by resolution, so there doesn't actually have to be a public hearing.
Yeah.
It was decided to have an informational hearing, just
Oh, there, there are good points.
Just to take input from the public, they could do something tonight with a resolution.
Yeah, there's benefits on both sides. I can see that. We had a request from the Chamber a few years ago, Harley and I considered it, and I had a request from some constituents, constituents in that area, and we revisited it. And I think that this should be the final time, we ought to do something with it, the police department has a, a lot on their plate, and this council needs to decide. It was publicized every time we did it, so that, you know, I, I know where this young lady lives, up on, on Third Street, and I understand her concerns. I think, I think the stop signs there would help. Wintertime, it's congested there anyway. And probably, from a maintenance standpoint, if we, if we can legitimize the plow vehicles going both ways going both ways, we'll be better off, you know? I don't see it generating that much more traffic, because what happens with people, they'll choose one street or another, whatever their convenience, and that one will become busier. It's as simple as that. This might even make it better.
Well, it'd be very well publicized, and you don't have people forgetting that it's a long way straight one time, start going around directly.
Well, I'll tell you what. If you could get everybody to read the papers, they'd probably be filling this place tonight talking about it. It will be signed, and hopefully people will obey the traffic laws.
There is less confusion when you go from one-way to two-way than...
Than from two-way to one.
The absent...
Chief?
Yeah, yeah.
Aren't there also plans to have it, you know, have the change take effect as of X day, like six months down the road, to get people used to the idea? Or get it changed, but no tickets until, you know, X day, or however you explained it?
To be implemented, I would ask for some sort of clause in the resolution that gives us a little bit of latitude to work around whether, because this is gonna require high visibility on a number of planes, markings on the streets, signs, and publicity. And for the most part, when we make the change, it's just gonna have to be like the throw of a switch. We'll probably have, you know, new signs posted, covered, and so they're all up in their appropriate manner, and then unveil it at a certain time, but because part of what we're looking to do is pavement markings, so again, this is very visible on a number of different levels. We don't want this to be a safety issue, that's why we're looking at, you know, working on new high-visibility pavement markings, new signs erected, and a lot of publicity.
You take...
What are you looking at? Two months, three months?
Well, basically, for paving purposes and for digging, this is gonna require U F P O on some streets, hopefully by, at least by fall.
I'd call it like September 1st, or September 15th, or...
Be worried perhaps to be implemented at a time in the direction of the police department.
That would give you more flexibility.
You've got a big M R resources, you got a lot of paving going on out there, and... A lot with the paving crews right now.
Yeah, I know.
So we can do some sign work in range of weather.
Okay. I would like the council to consider it, go on, I think that overall, from what I've seen, it will be an overall benefit. I mean, there are drawbacks, there are drawbacks to everything. I think we should do it. Or if you're consideration, if it flies, it flies, if it dies, it dies, we'll leave the police department alone, let them do their other work, because they've got enough.
Is there anyone else that cares to speak on this issue? I'll entertain a motion to...
There, excuse me. If I could, I know the police have done a terrific job laying this out and explaining, but there were some questions that came up tonight about signage and whatnot. Is it possible, Mark, if we could put together a visual, if you will, sketch of what this is gonna look like, wouldn't... Why don't I have that?
It should be in your map. There was one setup, some provided conditions, and then there's one second, and then there's a whole.
Well, I think that Sergeant Holden would work with any of the neighbors, and, I mean, you know most of the concerns there. I think you got an open door if one of them wants to talk to you, or, you know...
Well, this is what I was gonna suggest, Randy, if with that sketch, if it's, does it have the signage on there, Sharon? The proposed new signage in the street markings and all of that? Would it be well to postpone to the next meeting, and allow that to be seen by any of the neighbors, who could put out a public notice, come down to the, or put them in the clerk's office? Put them into clerk's office, so that they can peruse them, if they have questions, they can call their aldermen, or hopefully...
I see, they should call the people that tend to study.
Absolutely.
I'm not a traffic police officer, and I think that, you know, Sergeant Holden...
Would that be acceptable, this, if there's any concerns that we haven't answered, or those that did come up tonight that people aren't quite sure of? You know, when you present something like this to the public for the first time, some that visually see exactly what this is gonna look like, and the new signage, I mean, reading from the old thing against the fact that we were going to put the signage up about changing to two-way for several months, that kind of thing? What do you think? Is that something that maybe could...
I'm getting that thing, my sign, that's...
Well, we could leave that in the clerk's office, they could at least pick it up and look at it, and maybe have a better sense of what we're trying to do. And all I'm recommending is that we postpone it for the next meeting, just to give people that opportunity.
Right.
Mr. Cavalero, we have the rough blueprint right here. If we wanted, we have nobody in the room, if there's that much concern, to postpone it a month. We've gotta get this work done...
Two weeks.
Now.
Two weeks.
It's summertime now. We're losing now. What we have to do is, if you wanna post it, maybe we should post it in the paper, as we always do, that the people can come down, people that are interested, and take a look at it. People that are not, let's move forward.
Okay. Yes. See, my concern is, I would recommend that the council, we either do all or none. I think mostly what will happen now will be information. If the council either wants to do it, or they don't. That's my...
Well, from what the chief said, this can't be done right away anyway, so there would be time to provide information with the maps, et cetera, even if it was voted on tonight, it is not going to be put in place till, we're talking probably the first of September at the earliest, if we're going outside.
We have to have the opportunity to put paint down before September 1st. Once the temperature starts dropping, we can't change that.
Right. I understand.
Well, I think we should do it, the chief said. Give the latitude of the timeframe to the police department. You guys are the ones that know what you gotta do, more than we do. If we give it to you, then you'll do what you could do best with your time.
Yes.
But I don't have a problem with putting something under the clerk's office, people wanna look at it.
Everybody reads the value news, they don't all come to council meetings, I've been coming to council meetings for a hundred years, and people don't come here unless it's their thing. But those pictures, the next value news, and so, then the people will be calling their own, if it's not where you get more of it, general, if you do something in a hurry, you're gonna have a lot of people screaming again, the city's not doing what they wanna do, they're doing what they wanna do. I think they should have a voice. And to me, put that picture in the paper, whoever lives on those streets, if they're not happy for them, get ahold of you guys, and you'll have something to talk about, even if it is next week.
All the papers, all the papers, they have access to it. Okay. I will entertain a motion to close the informational hearing.
I'll offer it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, does, do one of the aldermen want to offer a motion?
Well, I wanna pull the council, I don't want it to die, 'cause I think it's a good thing. If we're gonna get hung up, and we wanna hold the police department up for a couple weeks, then so be it. But...
All right, I'll have the city clerk read...
There's time constraints here, and we need to be concerned about that, because this is one small section of the city, and we spent a tremendous amount of time on it.
Yes.
And there's been a lot of people, these meetings are televised, they're on the internet, they're in the two newspapers, and people really and truly have some obligation to, you know, to see what goes on.
Alderman, would you be willing to offer a motion to table this till the first meeting in August?
Okay, but I want it on the first meeting in August, and I want it for a vote, I don't want it another big...
Yes, yes. Vote will be held at the first meeting in August if you offer this motion.
I'll offer it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. This will be on the agenda for the meeting of the 5th of August for a vote. And in the meantime, we will get the maps into the paper with stories, if the reporters here will please contact Sergeant Simpson, you can get the information, and I'd appreciate everything you can do to help us get the information out to everyone. Next item.
Thank you. Red City Clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held at this council meeting to July 15th, relative to proposed local law to amend Chapter 165 entitled Parking of Oversized Vehicles by amending subsection 165-311G and by adding a new subsection 165-31.1H to read as follows. Amendment 165-31.1G will read Detached Commercial Trailers Shall Be Banned From Parking At Indian Point Landing And Bullhead Point. Add 165-31.1H to read No Vehicle Described In Subsection A Shall Be Allowed To Park At Indian Point Or Bullhead Point For More Than Two Hours. Mayor Stafford Will Declare The Public Hearing Open.
Is there anyone that would care to speak on this issue? None on the council? I'll entertain a motion...
Only to suggest why this came forward in the first place, if we wanna explain that to the public.
The no detached trailers, we wanted to prohibit trailers getting dropped from Bullhead Point, tried to keep an handle on that, and we need to include that in the code. We had a lot in the past, we had a lot of tractor-trailer trailers getting dropped over there for sometimes days.
Land swap with Dean Foods back in 94, 95-ish?
The Dean Foods part is pretty much closed itself, however, there are other tractor, other commercial vehicles that were getting dropped at time of time, so we're kinda looking to cinch that up. Now, the other part of that has to do with the vehicles described in subsection A, subsection A is a definition of an oversized vehicle. Initially, when Bullhead Point was being developed and considered for paving, there was considered, concerns that large vehicles might tear up the pavement. T P W, the commissioner assures me that he does not have those concerns. In fact, there is a lot of large, oversized vehicles, traffic there, county vehicles, school buses on any given day, and they are not a hazard to the pavement, so we really don't wanna restrict them. But we wanna limit that just in a reasonable period, so we propose two hours for that.
We still will have the emergency, no emergency parking there available?
Yes.
Which would include tractor-trails?
Yes.
Can I ask a real dumb question, 'cause I really don't wanna read about this next week? Could you describe what an oversized vehicle is? And I guess to get to the point, I'll call a spade a spade, is a great big orange truck that sells hot dogs, is that an oversized vehicle that's gonna be kicked out and not allowed to sell, not allowed to park at Bullhead Point? And how does that wrinkle fit in there?
If somebody has got a, in the code, the subsection A...
The last thing I wanna read about is now we can't even park one over there, so...
I don't have subsection A, because my clerk sits here, so I can't tell you.
Have a copy?
I'll get your phone book.
I didn't hear him.
I think what he's saying is, Shannon's Hot Dog Stand can be considered an oversized vehicle. We need to know that before we vote. If we're gonna call it spade a spade, let's call it spade a spade.
No, he just doesn't want bad publicity. You should know that, he already got money up this week.
Do you say eight, Mark?
Eight feet wide, eight feet high, eighteen feet long. Eight wide, eight high, or eighteen feet long?
Still would be overridden by the permit process anyways.
Are you sure?
Sure.
Well, they're not eighteen feet long.
Are you sure we're not gonna get... I can see it right now.
Could be eight feet high, it's bigger than eight feet high, now that.
We have issued a permit for them to be there on an annual basis.
What'd you say, the length of that, or it'd be about fourteen, fifteen?
Eight feet wide, intent?
Eight feet wide, or eight feet high, or eighteen feet long, and I'll bet you it's taller than eight feet high.
I, yeah, probably is. Again, the intent of this was restricting commercial vehicles, however you bring...
We've discussed a lot about intent and what the law actually says over the last couple of years, so...
And sometimes there's a great big difference between what the letter say and what the intent is.
You wanted to insert unless otherwise permitted, or unless otherwise placed in by the city. In front of that, we can stay away from all of that.
This is a local law, any major change has gotta be re-advertised, correct?
Yes. I'd suggest the whole matter be tabled.
Sorry.
No, don't be sorry.
I can see headline now, and city puts a bullseye on Shannon's Hot Dogs can't even park here now.
I think so.
And, well, I just...
I think you should close the hearing and revisit.
Yeah, I think so.
We should revisit the call.
I'll move it, I'll table it, make a motion to table.
I'll second it.
Well, we have to, motion to close the public hearing.
We'll start that one then, I'll move it.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to table?
I'll move it.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to table?
Can't just eat what happened down at the bar, you'll be right down here tomorrow morning and say, hey, you can't park there, it's an oversized vehicle.
Once we get the language.
Right. Language, options.
Okay, next item.
Oh, they didn't have... Yeah, it's like 3:30. Yeah, All-Star game starts in 12 minutes. Of course, Kerry Wood will be pitching by 8:30, so...
That's an early thing. Where does your class go to?
1-2-3, all Cardinals. Yeah. Just rolling one. Yes.
Next item?
Res, a common council at their meeting of July 1st, 2003, referred right-ofway submitted by Mr. Chris Atkins to abandon his existing driveway at 120 West Third Street North, and to construct a new driveway at the same address to the Fulton Planning Commission for their review and recommendation to the council. Res, a planning commission will meet on July 14th, 2003, to discuss the proposal and to refer their recommendation back to the common council to schedule a public hearing. Res, a common council has the final authority to approve or deny any right-ofway requests, either approved or denied by the planning commission. And whereas pursuant to Chapter 177, Subsection 177-54D of the Fulton City Code entitled Right-ofway Usage, there shall be a public notice and hearing before any use, structure, or improvement within the City of Fulton's right-ofway. As provided by law, such hearing shall be held by the common council, and in addition to said public notice of a hearing, as advertised in the official city newspaper by the city clerk, notice shall be given by the property owner in writing by certified mail, return receipt requested to all property owners of the land immediately adjacent, extending 100 feet therefrom, and the land directly opposite thereto, extending 100 feet from the street frontage of such... the street frontage of such opposite land. And said property owners appear on the latest completed assessment roll of the city. Now therefore be it resolved that pursuant to Chapter 177, subsection 177-54D, the clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held on August 5th at 7:00 PM in the council chambers relative to, to consider the above right-of-way requests submitted by Mr. Chris Atkins.
Motion?
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
The second right-of-way, I won't read through the, whereas as far as the notices and stuff, but the, it is a referral of the right-of-way submitted by Mr. James Cannon to enlarge his driveway at 89 Curtis Street to the Fulton Planning Commission, which was done. And the council has the final authority to approve or deny the right-of-way. So therefore it is incumbent on the property owner to notify all the, the properties within the 100 feet and is incumbent on the city clerk to advertise for a hearing for the meeting of August 5th.
Motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
The next item will be the same thing. It's for Stephen Dexter. It is property 202 West Third Street North. And it will authorize me to, to advertise for the public hearing for August 5th.
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
The next item is a referral by Mr. John Crook. His property is 172 South First Street. And it has been referred to the planning commission. And I have to advertise for a public hearing for August 5th on his right-of-way requests.
I'll move it. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Just like to ask the clerk, a, a letter will go out to each of these individuals indicating that they must have that certified letter mailed.
That letter has to go out by the property owner, not by the city.
But you're going to send the property owner...
Send the property owner the notification that they have...
Telling him that it's his responsibility.
A copy of the resolution?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, the resolution, yes.
Highlight it.
Thank you.
Res city clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held at this council meeting of July 15th relative to proposed local law to amend Chapter 165, subsection 165-34A, for entitled time limit permits to read as follows. Amendment 165-34A, number four to read Parking Lot Number Six, West of Fulton Savings Bank, containing approximately 35 spaces, two-hour parking enforced 8:30 AM to 5:30 PM. Mayor Stafford will declare the hearing open.
Is there anyone that would care to speak on this issue?
She, she was left, I guess, and Mark.
She's, they're right out there.
Just to give an explanation.
This, this was, was done to provide more parking for, term parking for customers in downtown in the absence of the big lot.
But this will be ongoing even after the...
Right, but the, the lot just south of that has the all-day parking.
Right.
So it, it's just moving that, it's putting the, the timed parking closer to the businesses. That small 35-space lot right across from Fulton Savings, yes. Part of it is already 200 now. This is just extending that to that whole lot to make it more convenient for the customers Anyone else care to speak on this? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Did the bank go up?
Yes.
Now therefore be it resolved that the proposed local law amending Chapter 165, the vehicle and traffic law of the City of Fulton was hereby adopted as described above.
Motion?
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolve that the city chamberlain be authorized to make the following contingent transfers. $6,950 from contingent to engineering, point two for a scanner. $3,500 from contingent to the police department, point two for four portable radios. $3,500 from the contingent to 7266.2...
$3,300.
$3,300, excuse me, for overhead door. And $3,000 from contingent to library for AC and electrical.
Motion?
I'll approve that, you're right. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolve that the mayor be authorized to sign the engineering proposal from Camp Dresser and McGee in the amount of $6,170 for engineering services for the study of the HVAC system and roof and building evaluation for the Fulton War Memorial.
I'll move it.
Fulton Municipal Building.
Fulton Municipal Building, excuse me.
I have a question.
Yes.
Mayor, looking over these, actually, there's three quotes. Two quotes that were submitted by CDM, one in March, another one in July, and then the other engineering firm, CWD. In looking these over, I'm not sure that we're quoting, we're getting quotes apples for apples. What I'm suggesting is if you look at CWD's quote dated April 18th, both under roof and heating and air conditioning, he's proposing a painting design drawings per scale in addition to a report. The second quote I got from CDM talks about a verbal, or speaking, a written report, whereas in his first quote, he talks about plans and specifications. And that was changed. I guess what I'm getting at is I'm not sure there's, these two quotes are apples for apples. And I was wondering if we could get Ron Eading to sit down with these two gentlemen and review these quotes to be sure that the price difference is truly a difference in price based on apples for apples or what, is somebody giving us more than the other? And that doesn't seem clear to me. I don't know about any of the other...
Did you get a copy of Ron Eading's letter?
I did.
Okay.
But reading the two quotes doesn't match up. Especially if you look at the first quote that was submitted by CDM. And in all fairness to the council, I will tell you, I do know the gentleman from CWD and I don't know the gentleman from CDM. But to me, that's not the issue here. What I'm pointing out to you is it appears that one is offering a bit more than the other. And now we have a lower price from the one compared to the other. But all I'm concerned about is what are we getting for that money? I would suggest that, I'd like to suggest to the council, if they view this and read it the same way I do, that we ask Ron to meet with each of them and bring it back to the council at the next meeting.
Are you offering a motion to table?
I would like to offer that as a motion.
We had a motion previous to that, too.
Do we have a motion already?
We had a motion already. We have a motion to approve it.
Do we have a second? Did we get a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve this. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Lincoln.
Yes.
Alderman Sahaski.
Yes.
Alderman Weston.
No.
Alderman Cavallaro.
No.
Alderman Thompson.
Yes.
Alderman Woodward.
Yes.
Motion's carried.
I think Ron Eading looked at this and he had told us, we're working on it. And when we did it, the capital planning, a couple months of expenses, we insisted that we get this building going because we're losing time on our construction. We're losing time on our streets. We don't move the capital, we're losing time on the works that need to be done. DPW and at the ice rink, if we don't do something with this building, we're going to lose money.
John Franks and his company have done a lot of work for us in the past. I mean, I think that if Eading said we're looking for something, I just can't imagine that...
Well, Ron spends a lot of time... I understand Joe's concern because, I mean, I've seen a lot of proposals written and everybody seems to put their spin on things, but if we're going to put them there, we need to push the council.
The difference in the quotes was $1,100?
No, it's more than that. It's six something to 12 something. He came down, the one, CDM, came down from 19 to 6. And the other guy was at 12 from the beginning. I was a person for 12 years and when I look at this, I'm just concerned that we're, it's not apples for apples.
Well, one, one thing that I think you're going to find right now, people are hungry. There's not a lot of work.
I just want to be sure, Ron, that what we spend is what we're going to get.
But see, 19, between 19 and 12 is like 12 between 12 and 6.
Joe, I don't, I'm, I'm looking here at the, the, CDM says 7250, or CWD, 7250.
CWD?
Uh, yep.
Yeah, there's two parts to it. One, the heat base. Last base.
It's another five grand.
4950. That's for the...
4950 and, and 72.
That's for the heating and air conditioning portion. He's got it broken down into portions.
Yep, I see that now.
CDM, actually, he breaks it down too, in the bottom, financial agreement. He's got 6170 and he said lump sum for HVAC 635. And for the roof is 1335.
Yeah, I see that.
But he's not submitting drawings. That's my question.
It's already passed, so it's kind of a moot point now.
And that would be an extra cost, the drawings?
Well, that's why I said, I said, if you move, you have to ask the question.
You mean drawings on HVAC or drawings on roof? You're not going to get drawings on roof.
Yeah, he's quoting drawings on the roof.
Well, we're not rebuilding.
No, no. That's not what he's asking.
But you're going to get specs.
No. The painting design will be shown per scale, the chunks of roof and all the problem areas.
I will, I will ask, I will ask Ron to go back over these. I think he's gone over them already. Before he made his recommendation, I would like to think he did anyways. But I will ask them, ask him to look at these again and, and make sure that it is apples to apples because that is in the best interest of the city. Next item, please.
Next item is a bond resolution. The resolution authorizing the issuance of $1,580,765 in serial bonds of the City of Fulton, Oswego County, New York for various capital projects in and for said city.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Motion carried.
I am consistent. If anything else, I'm consistent. I have not voted for one ban in five and a half years and the next six months aren't going to change.
Next item.
Resolve that the city clerk be authorized to advertise for seal bids in his office in the municipal building on or before Monday, August 4th, 2003 up to 2:00 PM and to be publicly open that same day at 2:15 PM in the council chambers for water piping materials in accordance with specifications prepared by the Water and Sanitation Commissioner.
Motion?
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Whereas a survey by John W. English dated June 27th, 2003, the premises known as 514 West Second Street shows the residence to be .75 feet.
Point?
Yes. 75 feet.
They wanted to be...
Into the Walnut Street right-of-way, said survey being part of this resolution. Whereas the said residence has been in the same location for over 50 years. Now therefore be it resolved by the common council that said residence may continue to be maintained in its, in its present location for as long as it, it exists.
Now, can I ask you another question? Since I'm the one that pointed out that was .75 feet, looking at this map, doesn't the right-of-way usually go further back than the curb? If you're going to use the word right-of-way, if the right-of-way is generally 30 or 33 feet from the center of the road, wouldn't that put that about 15 to 20 feet into the right-of-way? But actually, eight inches into the street?
The right-of-way is not a static concept. There's not a certain amount. It depends on exactly where in the city. Some places your deed will read to the street line. I don't know what it reads here, but it doesn't really matter because all you're really saying is that the residence continues as long as it exists, whether it's .75 or 17 feet of the right-of-way. It doesn't really matter because, but it is a good point. It'd better change the resolution to be...
Well, that would depend on what it said in the deed on how far the right-of-way is.
You could change the resolution to read the residence as .75 feet into Walnut Street to...
I think that's a more accurate description.
No, see, street lines on a survey are the right-of-way. Actually, that's very...
So that line isn't the curb?
That's not the curb line, no. That's the street line.
The center, center of the street?
No, that would be the north street line.
North street line, yes.
So that street, the, the up and down line there underneath Walnut Street, that is not the curb? That is the right, that is the right-of-way?
That is the right-of-way.
Okay, sorry. In that case, I'm fine with it.
I just want to say that since I've been here, they, when this has come up, attorneys used to get, to ask for quick lane fees. And I never thought that was a good idea because somebody may want to expand these streets. So I've told other attorneys I would prefer to do it this way, which is basically saying that as long as this house exists, it can stay like this, but as soon as this house and water exists, you lose that, that the city could expand the street.
Well, they're saying that they, if we choose to want to expand the street, when that exists, we can't.
Oh, you always have an attorney to me. But you're, yes, you are giving up, you are giving up the right to do so without compensation right now because, right now because it exists like this, if you wanted to expand, could make them move, but then they also have an adverse possession argument. Certainly, it would cost the city some money for the right-of-way. But this is more done for title purposes, a bank kind of, well, like this existing...
We're talking about nine inches that's been in the same location for over 50 years.
It really is.
I think we ought to get rid of them. I think we ought to get rid of them.
Now therefore be it resolved by the common council that said residence may continue to be maintained in its present location as long as it, as it exists.
Motion?
I'll move it. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is a discussion item. This situation has come up with assessment taxation, the payment of taxes and penalties and interest on, on late payments for whatever reason. And there's nothing in the charter right now to, to address this. So I, I know that some of the aldermen have been approached by constituents that have had a problem with this and, and also the city chamberlain. So this is the first draft of a proposal that would provide a means to remedy the situation.
Your honor, originally, did I understand you to propose the waters in the area to handle this?
No, it's audit committee.
Audit committee?
No, audit, it's audit committee.
Very similar to the way the water is...
Right, right. I'll, I'll read what we have right now. And as I said, this is just a first draft. Under C240D, Payment of Taxes, D is Administrative Hearing. When all or any portion of real estate property taxes due are not paid on or before February 15, interest and penalty shall accrue at the rate specified in Sections 2, 4, 0, A or B. The property owner is entitled to challenge the interest and penalties by requesting an administrative hearing. The administrative hearing shall be held before the city chamberlain, mayor, and the Audit Finance Budget Committee of the common council. Upon completion of the administrative hearing, the Audit Finance Budget Committee shall hereby, is hereby authorized to waive the interest and penalties accrued in the event that they determine the challenge of the property owner is justified.
That's part where it says city chamberlain, mayor, and, is that and/or? Or does that mean that five of us are gonna have to...
No, it's, it's the same way with the water and sanitation. That administrative hearing is done by the mayor, the water and sanitation committee, and the water and sanitation.
Yeah, but they're met times in the three councils.
Yes, I mean, it could be. They're, they're on there. They're the ones who are gonna do the final vote anyways. And I wanted to modify this after I got it on there. That it's hereby authorized to waive the interest accrued by majority vote. So it would be the, the Audit Finance Committee that is voting on, just that.
Yeah, okay.
Same guys who run the water, so it's a draw.
Yeah, this...
This year.
I would encourage the council, I think this looks good. I mean, if you wanna take it, digest it for another two weeks.
I don't have a problem with that. The only question I had is how much more work is it for Jimmy? And he told me, he told me it was none, so...
It's actually gonna be less work for Jimmy because these are the things that happen to, to that.
Works for me.
Right now, we have nothing in place to, to address problems of this nature.
Can I make a suggestion? I mean, this is kind of insignificant, but the word "challenge" doesn't quite strike me only in the sense that the law is such, if you're late, the penalties exist, period. Request relief? Something other than "challenge" because that sounds a little more like they had a case to begin with.
So you, I could say request relief from...
Well, as a suggestion, Dave, request relief or another term, "challenge," sounds like it's, they have a legal...
That's why it's such a draft.
That's true.
And I would question whether, I'm not sure if we want some kind of a time. I know that we don't want people to be subject to the wind or down the winds, but when the audit committee and the chair, mayor and Jimmy get together, but I also don't think we want these taxes, penalties to sit out there forever because don't they continue to accrue? I mean, I don't wanna fix months down the road, tell somebody you lose, you gotta, you gotta pay plus for the last decision.
Well, I think it should be made known upfront that if, if I request relief on March first, when, I should be told upfront that if you win?
You win.
If you lose, it's gonna be...
All or nothing?
Up until the date that it happens and, you know, I guess that's... Up till the date you pay.
No, it should be made little...
Either, either that or, you know, have a provision in there that, you know, I may not like it, but I'll pay it on March first or April first, and if I win, I get a refund of my interest in that.
No interest.
But I was also gonna ask, maybe you wanted to say that you can't challenge it.
I pay it so I don't lose my house, but...
But we don't do that with water, right? You're not required to pay the water.
No, the thing is, water bills, they will. What, what we do is because of the time involved, sometimes setting meetings up and getting water resolved, contacting people, we will waive the penalty charges, but not the water. And then when it's resolved, from that point on, you're on your own. I mean, if we decide that someone shouldn't pay part of the sewer portion because they had a leak that didn't go to the sanitary sewer, then we will forgive that and up to that point, we, because, because we haven't decided legitimacy, we're holding them on, so we don't charge them.
Then also won't be shut-offs.
Then there won't be shut-offs.
But I don't think taking the property taxes is gonna be an issue.
It's not gonna be an issue because any of these should be resolved the first year. These, these shouldn't roll over into another year. But I think that from, from the number of years I've done water grievances, I think the committee needs a little latitude on, on the timeframe. I think we need to decide that because each case is gonna be in an individual merit. Typically, the law is the law, and if you're late, you need to pay. But if people don't get their notices, mortgage companies sell to other mortgage companies, the banks sell mortgages to other banks, and notices, tax notices don't get passed on to the property owners. Those are things that we'll wanna look at. We don't wanna have somebody come in and say, gee, I just lost my job. I'm not referring to me. I got a couple months left. And I don't need to pay this. I couldn't pay it. No, I won't be, no. But I mean, those aren't the things that we, we looked at doing something like this. We look for legitimate six. So I think, I don't know how the rest of the audit committee feels and of course, the whole council, but I think you need some latitude there.
Well, absolutely. I think we established that with the water grievance and we have, in fact, I think, been rather consistent.
We have.
In every situation that we've dealt with, and hopefully that'll be the case here.
I think it's a good draft the way it is. I think the council, I consider that.
Oh, I, I agree. It's good.
Okay, that's fine. We'll, we'll go for the hearing because I, I can tell you now, we got people waiting in the wings. I feel bothered Jimmy all the time, talking about I ain't my bag, thinking I'm not doing any fun.
I step...
Do you, do you want to, do you want to offer a motion?
I'll offer a motion.
Public hearing for August?
I'll second it.
August first?
August fifth.
August fifth.
That's the next meeting.
And Joe, did you get the changes that were made in the answer because we're gonna have the public say this?
The only one I heard was by majority vote.
Request relief from it. What I'll do is, is do a new, get the changes in the computer.
Whatever the council has for changes.
Well, it's two weeks, it's not...
Public hearing for August fifth.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Last item is if we are going to impose any exemptions on clothing and footwear, either on a permanent basis or a temporary. It has to be done tonight because we have to take action before July eighteenth.
Didn't we take action two weeks ago?
I had, I had one person call me in regards to this. Well, it was on last week, but, or two weeks ago. But also at that point, Alderman Cavallaro questioned the, our ability to, to adjust sales tax. And we just got that information back from State Tax Department. So we, we can't adjust it by proportions of a percent. So this is back on the agenda for any action tonight. I have had one person call me in regards to this, and that was Joe Cortini. He said that he understands why the council was not in favor of the, the local exemption that's continuous because the last time we tried that, it did not encourage the business that we had hoped that it would. But he did say that he would appreciate support of the temporary periods, which are August twenty-sixth, two thousand and three through September first, two thousand and three, and January twenty-sixth, two thousand and four, to February first, two thousand and four. He said, in the past, when we have done these temporaries, that it has been very beneficial to the people in this city to save the sales tax, and it's been good for business. And he would appreciate your support on that.
Your honor, how you feel?
I, I think that, that doing the two periods, only one week each, is not going to be detrimental to our sales tax. The, what we did before, what we did away with it, that caused some problems.
Yeah, because we lost sales tax for six months and...
The two one-week periods, I, I think we can help the people in this city and also without hurting our revenue stream.
Well, I traditionally was in favor of our sales tax, leaving the whole thing the way it was. I could probably go on with a two-week period. I would caution the council on trying to reduce what we did until we have a full year to understand where our budget is.
Definitely.
If we start playing games with this, we're not gonna know what to do and somebody's gotta pay, and it always seems to end up to be the homeless. But I, I will try this.
Would you offer the motion for the temporary?
I'll offer that, your honor.
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion?
Why don't you do a roll call vote, please?
Okay. Alderman Lincoln?
I'm gonna vote against it. I'm not in favor of it due to budgetary reasons.
Alderman Sahaski? Alderman Weston?
I was against the permanent exemption, but I am in favor of the temporary. Yes.
Alderman Cavallaro?
Yes.
Alderman Woodward? Or excuse me, Alderman Thompson?
Yes.
Alderman Woodward?
Yes.
Sorry, huh?
How soon you forget?
He's not gone yet.
Motion is carried?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Is there anyone in the audience that has any further business to bring before the council, sir?
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
My name is John Case, and I just have one question about an article in The Plenum Times. Jan, uh, June second, June third. It was about the park at Bullhead Point that you passed on that, that date. But at the end of the article, it's got a statement in here by Mr. Hawthorne about how the property was never sold to the city and therefore was never turned into a city park until today. And I just wondered what determined, what part of that the city did not purchase.
Well, first of all, and I know Nicole probably wrote the story, but we're not responsible for what's written in the paper, but it's something I said, and I said it. Just to make it clear, and I thought the whole article relating to that did, most of the property over there that we're talking about was main property. In other words, there was the lake. And in the mid, early seventies, when they did urban renewal and they tore up downtown, they took all their debris over there and just threw it there. Basically, just extended the property out into the lake for them. So the city never got a deed for a lot of the property, but the city, by virtue of creating it, you couldn't get away with that. You, well, I don't say get away with it. You couldn't do that today. It's just not allowed to be done. The city basically created property.
Yeah, I understand that, but it was a swamp in there too. That's what I don't understand, you know, that... You know, so in other words, you're saying the lakefront was up closer to the highway?
I, that's what I'm told. I mean, I don't recall. But I understand like when they did construction over there, they, underneath all the...
Right.
John, didn't your family sell us north?
Yeah, my dad did.
Well, yeah, that's...
Yeah, yeah.
How far did it go that way?
So the point is, is everything that was on the west side of Tenry Creek and on the south side of, of Route Three, uh, Route Three was sold to the city.
Okay.
And the lakefront and the city property. Everything else was my dad's Aunt Marguerite, where North Bay is.
Yeah, right. I remember when they had...
Right, right. So, I, I just didn't understand why, you know, why it was said that it was never sold and...
It was, it was filled in property. That's what, that's what that was based on.
What are they gonna do about that? If it's not a, if it's not owned?
It is a park now.
Well, it's...
I understand that, but nobody ever purchased it.
No. We made it.
Well, there's a lot of legal issues you're bringing up. I mean, theoretically, all the lake owners owned to the center of the lake so that you could get it to a big...
Oh, I understand. I, I'm not looking for any, I'm just, I just didn't understand it because in a deed, it shows south and east and...
I just think it might be, the only problem it could arise is if the city was to sell it, passing it by a warranty deed, which now that it does the, the park, that's not gonna happen anymore.
Right.
So I, I don't foresee any problems.
Because I, because really, there isn't anything to say on how big it is.
Well, except for the regulation, we can't, we know we can't make it bigger.
It's not gonna get any bigger.
Well, I understand, but the point is, is you don't really know where the lake shoreline was in the beginning.
We don't, no. You're right. Because the deed did, didn't, didn't have a, it was an old...
Well, there's not really a survey. It just goes by points, goes by points, right?
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Another question.
Question again about the water. Because I didn't get mine today, but are they gonna be paying by the days to use the water or the gallon that you use? What has the days got to do with how much water you use? Why are they putting the cost against ninety-three days, eighty-five days, ninety-seven days? If you use nine thousand gallons of water in how many days, aren't you paying for the gallons of water that you use?
Yes, yes, you're, you're paying for the gallons that you use, but the, the meter charge is up by day. Because it...
The charge is done by day?
Yeah.
Now, when you get your bill, you're gonna get four lines because I saw my mother-in-law's today and heard all of, and I heard all about it. The first line, the first line is...
It's like being married, isn't it?
That's why they call them mother-in-law's, right? The first line, if you, if your bill last time was higher than it was supposed to be and you got a credit, the first line is gonna be a credit. Then there's gonna, then there's gonna be water, then there's gonna be sewer, and then, I forgot what they called it. It's not called meter charge. It's called...
Demand charge?
Meter demand or something like that.
Demand, the word demand is, I think it is a meter charge.
The base, the base charge.
Whatever that last line is, that last line works out to twenty-six dollars and twenty-five cents for ninety, for ninety days. Now, if your bill, because the, the meter reader doesn't come by every ninety days like clockwork, maybe it's eighty-eight days, your bill be a little bit less than twenty-six and a quarter. If it's ninety-three days, it'll be a little bit more than twenty-six and a quarter.
What number are they coming up to you by, a little less or a little more?
The date is twenty-six, is twenty-six dollars and twenty-five cents for ninety days.
So they divide by ninety days and come up with the daily rates. Time the, times the number of days.
Why can't the twenty-six dollars take care of the, the use of the meter? And then if you use nine thousand gallons of water, pay a dollar eighty...
That's exactly the way it is. That's exactly the way the bill is, but it's broken out separately so you can see the different pieces. You could see how much the meter charge is and how much the demand, the nine thousand gallons is.
It still doesn't matter if we have...
Some people had a lump, the last bills that I got, they were all lumped together. And people wanted, wanted to see it broken out, and so it's been broken out now. And like I said, if you got a high bill last time, the first line on your bill is gonna be a credit.
Is that, I mean, you never had that before, right?
No, that's correct.
That should be a flat rate?
It is a flat rate.
How many days you do, you got, if you want to, you use nine thousand gallons of water?
Well, the reason we did it on a, the reason we did it on a daily basis though, I guess the best way to explain it was, it took effect on April first. And if you look at your bill, like my mother-in-law's, was from March eleventh through June twenty-first, second, third, something like that. So she shouldn't have been charged for June eleven, or from March eleventh through March thirty-first for that demand charge. Well, we couldn't charge the demand charge until April first. So her bill was for ninety-seven or ninety-eight days, but she only has the demand charge from April first up until the day they read their meter. Because we can't charge for the March eleventh through March thirty-first.
Now that it's been in filled, why can't it still be twenty-five dollars changed?
Because there's still people that haven't gotten a full period correct water bill.
And if you have people that, that have their water turned on mid-cycle or ended mid-cycle, they only have to pay for the days that they have it.
So it doesn't matter which, the water usage is just an extra expense. It doesn't matter...
The water usage is water usage.
That's...
That would take care of that other twenty-five. I, I still find very difficult to find out by the days. I understand what you're talking about, where you come up the dollars to pay from. We were never paying that twenty-five dollars before. Now we're paying twenty-five dollars, and we're still paying for days, which I don't want paying for days before, before they put the twenty-five dollars on my water bill. I'm, I'm by myself, I only use nine thousand gallons. My bill is not as high as some other people who use twenty thousand or thirteen thousand. The twenty-five dollars, of course, it's only for three months. I shouldn't complain because it's three months of usage. But I could never see why, if I'm using nine thousand gallons of water, that's what I'm using. That's what I should pay for.
And that's what you are paying for.
And then those extra days, that's to me off.
No, the, the extra days don't have anything to do with your water consumption. They have to do with the number of days you had the demand, the old demand charge. It's a now meter charge or a base charge or whatever. That, that is on a daily basis, and that is because it fluctuates with the number of days between your readings on your meter.
Yeah, if you had zero usage, let's say you went to Florida for three months, four months. You had zero usage, you're still gonna get a bill for twenty-six and a quarter?
You still have that days.
Yes, that twenty-six and a quarter for ninety days, it, that's there whether you use water or not. And then the other line that says actual meter use for your nine thousand gallons at a dollar eighty-one per thousand, that's the number, that's the second line that's on there. Okay?
We're, we're, we're trying, we're trying to get the... We're, we're, we're trying to, we're trying to get this, get the information on the bill, uh, broken down, so that people can better understand it.
I've said break it down, I just don't like paying those extra days for something that I could, I mean, I understand, you gotta pay for having...
Well, you can't...
And that, these days and all that stuff.
I guess the, the best way to explain that with the extra days is, it'll all even out, they could, they can only do so many 97-day quarters. If they do 97 days three times, then, you know, your last quarter's only gonna be for about 75 days. It'll, it's usually 90 days, give or take a few. The one I, the water bill I saw today was for 97, my bill I just got was for, I think, 91, so it's always around 90 days, but, uh, you can't do 97 four times in a year, you just can't.
It's, it's physically impossible for a people to do...
Well, then, if you wanna say close enough, then 97 is close enough to 90, so, you'll get a bill for 75 days one of these days, and, and it'll all work out.
Yeah, you'll pay in the end.
If you get a few 97s, we'll get you.
Is there any other business to be, to be brought before the council? From the council?
Uh, yes, your honor, I have a fax problem over 811 Hannibal Street that I'd like you to look into tomorrow with Hannibal Control Officer, it's a pretty serious problem.
What's, what's the problem?
There's a fax.
Fax, a fax.
F O X.
Yeah, okay, but you're, you're talking, the 800 block of Hannibal Street, which is...
811.
Which is bordering the town of...
Right.
Granby.
Right, but it's coming, it's coming in the neighbor's yard.
Is that my mother's back porch?
Okay, so, what, what you're asking is, is the Hannibal Control Officer, uh, try to tap that fox, the 811 Hannibal Street.
You got it.
Is it a Granby fox, or is it a Holden?
I think...
Either way, it's nothing that 20 gauge cans off.
He's just visiting, man.
Well, I mean, we want the other dollar.
Charge Granby.
Okay.
Thank you, that's it tonight.
Mayor, I had a numerous amount of calls on a, a safety issue in the, in the second ward, around Chestnut Street, Walnut, Oak Street, Third Street, um, there was, there's a barricade on, um, West Second Street by Chestnut, all right, so the people that live in that area are just allowed going in there. What's happening, in the calls that I received, there's a numerous number of cars running that stops on, on the Second Street and Chestnut, they start coming off of First Street, all right, and, and they're probably just not aware of it, or whatever it is.
Stop sign?
Yes.
Congratulations, and where?
West Second and Church, West Second and Chestnut.
Okay.
This afternoon, I was, I was out in my front lawn, and there was at least over 15 cars running at stop sign.
Sign there?
Yeah, there's a stop sign there, they're running it.
Maybe, maybe westbound traffic?
No, they're coming off of, they're coming off of First Street, yes, westbound.
Towards the school.
Especially, especially work traffic, and I, I understand that they're working on First Street, so this same thing could occur, whereas they work, uh, work down to Oak Street, you know, that, so there's no accident, somebody getting hit, thank you.
They're running that stop sign because of the, since they were paving the street?
I, I would, I would imagine.
I think, 'cause we're getting a lot of extra traffic, so...
So there are fewer people, never in that area.
So I think that's what's happening, 'cause I saw, it's, of course, a, a big increase in traffic, because we're having to barricade some side streets off, and, and the paving that's on West First, so there's a lot more traffic, and, and streets that normally don't get that kind of traffic. Uh, I do wanna mention the fact that I appreciate the cooperation of the DPW, the Water Department, uh, the Traffic Department, I think they're doing a great job in, in controlling the traffic and getting the work done, because, uh, let's face it, uh, West First is a very heavily-traveled street, and it, uh, it's, when you get to paving a street like that, it takes a, a tremendous cooperative effort between all the departments, and I think they're doing a good job, and what I've seen that they put down so far is very, excellent job. That's it, thank you.
Fourth ward.
Yes, a couple of quick things, uh, for informational purposes, uh, at the last council meeting, I asked about reducing the sales tax, and as you alluded to, Mayor, we got a letter from the city attorney, who asked the question of the state, and I guess we cannot arbitrarily reduce that additional 1%, we're locked in for two years, one-year hint, so that's why that didn't go anywhere. City Attorney, your, your memo regarding the ATM machine, any word back from Empire on that? Empire, quite a good...
Yeah, the guy actually, the agent you're using, 'cause he was a broker, was actually trying to reach me today, I, yeah, and I emailed him back and said, I'm still waiting for you to revise the agreement, so while we were actually in our prior meeting, I got two messages here from him, 'cause I had told him that we had a meeting, and apparently all of a sudden, he wanted it looked at, and I, I don't have the proposed agreement, so...
I just was hoping that we're not gonna lose that opportunity.
I don't think we will, but, you know, everything with, with this outfit has been just a little bit inert, you know, they might...
So it's still...
Still a lot, I, I think they still wanna do it.
Um, Route 481 construction for the city, is that still gonna happen this season?
No.
It is not?
Not this season.
Okay, scheduled for next, or...
Well, it will depend on how much we're gonna have to come up with to get, acquire property, you'll have to make that decision when we come up with a figure.
Okay, thank you. And then one final thing, uh, City Attorney, the list of tax foreclosures, uh, is that something we should be acting on fairly soon?
Is that something you should, what?
Acting on fairly soon?
As long as you guys, I, I don't wanna, I don't think we should hold the properties very long, but, um, I mean, I think you need to, you need to decide what you wanna do with it. To me, an auction makes sense, just as the county does, in mass, you know, attract more attention, potentially get more money from our properties, but you each have to also determine whether or not there's specific properties that, you know, might be to, to a neighborhood's advantage to sell privately, because too small and not holdable, they make a good extra on or something.
We could do that longer, determine there's another guy.
Actually, as I, well, as I say in that letter, statute says in, um, tax foreclosures, you can sell, uh, once you acquire a tax foreclosure, you can sell pri, privately without a supermajority.
Oh, I didn't know that, I thought we... So, I guess the reason they bring it up, I only have one property on this list, I don't know how many aldermen are involved with the properties on the list, but it would seem to me...
No, I have, I have quite a few on there.
It would behoove us to act as soon as possible, whether or not you, we, we wanna go for auction, or if you have people that have come to you that are interested, one way or the other.
Right.
I would encourage those on the council who have properties to get with our city attorney, advise what direction we wanna go here. And we actually take possession of it, yeah?
No, I, I think a suggestion would be along those lines, Joe, is perhaps any alderman that has a property in their ward that, that they feel, again, would be in the best interest of the neighborhood to sell privately, that they come to make their request, and...
Exactly.
If they get a motion passed, I think that that's, that's suffice, and then whatever's left, and I think, I agree with it, it needs to be determined relatively quickly, it should be an auction set.
Well, it's taken a good bit of time to get it to this level, no reflection on you, just a lot of paperwork, so let's clean it up.
And the third option that we didn't talk about is demolition, I think, each, not each of you, but a lot of you have properties that we took, that you might wonder if it's, that probably need to come down first.
Yeah, absolutely. I got at least one, probably more than one. Well, can we make it a point, then, by, before next meeting, on the 5th, that everybody get with Dave, and, uh, let him know what it is we wanna do, or each of us wanna do